Court, do you like to call Concord?
Uh, we're just doing region tonight.
We're just doing region, okay.
And so we could do a roll call.
Okay. Anderson's present.
Booth present?
That present.
Is that present? Randy present?
Wilson present.
Most off you present.
Great. All right. So, um, well, we can start with our new business. The request to use CCHS for COVID-19 vaccine distribution.
So we might want to do introductions. The Concord Town Manager and Fire Chief are here. So maybe each of them could introduce themselves and then we'll, I think, turn it over to them to share what they're, what they're thinking.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Crane. I'm the Concord Town Manager.
Hi, I'm Tom Judge. I'm the Fire Chief and the Emergency Management Director for the Town of Concord.
Welcome, thank you.
Well, welcome, Stephen. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Tom for more of the details, but I'll just give you the kind of brief, high-level introduction. You know, there is a, there is a plan that exists that was developed a number of years ago for emergency, emergency dispensing sites for vaccines. I think it was H1N1 or a prior pandemic that never really needed the, the emergency distribution, but now we're in a situation where obviously we do. And so for reasons that Tom will go into in greater detail, the, the lower parking lot at CCH, CCHS is really the ideal site to do this. And I'll just share that we internally in our, as a part of our Emergency Operations Center team, we did talk about a number of other sites in town to come up with options, but really nothing can touch the high school in terms of its access, the ability to queue, the ability to kind of control the, the area and, and the space that we would need. Tom has done, and actually when we were talking to Carlisle about the idea of doing this, we had it in mind sort of as a, we are leasing a temporary structure to, to build that can be a testing site first and then can be transitioned once we have vaccines into a vaccine distribution site. So when we were talking to the Town of Carlisle about our plans, just to, just to, you know, I was talking, we invited the Administrator Tim Goddard and their Emergency Management Director along with Lori and Sarah, and I believe Court was there as well, but just to kind of talk through some of the ideas. And that turned into a conversation about, geez, we should really partner up on one of these things. Around that same time, DPH sent out a notification saying that you needed to have 200 first responders as a part of your, your population to be eligible to have a vaccine, an onsite vaccine clinic. So Tom, both Tom and I reached out to some of our neighboring communities and there was a definite interest in partnering on this. And so now we have a, we have a coalition of almost four, of over 400 first responders in the communities that we're working with that are interested in partnering with us on this. So this is, this, this emergency distribution site or dispensing site will be a really regionally significant tool. And we think that the experience we'll gain in doing this for first responders will greatly benefit our ability to vaccinate the rest of the community, which as, as we all know, is really the only pathway we're on right now to end the pandemic. And so that's why we're very excited about this opportunity, not only to partner with our, our neighboring communities, but also, like I said, help Concord do what it can to restore public, public health and eliminate COVID-19. So Tom, I don't know if you want to backfill the details on that?
Sure. I think, I mean, I think that that pretty well sums it up. This is, this, the, the history of the, the current emergency dispensing plan does date back to H1N1. And at the time, the high school, and it was the former high school, was identified as the, the optimum site for emergency dispensing. And it wasn't the building so much as the location, although the building was, you know, it was intended to use the cafeteria as the dispensing site. But the location for many reasons and the opportunities that the long driveways and the large parking lot present for moving people, moving a lot of people safely and in a controlled environment is really kind of unique to CCHS in, in town. There's really no other place that we can, that we can move the volume of people we're going to need to move to get a population vaccinated. The original plan, as I said, it called for the, it called for the cafeteria to be like the large area that you would, that you would be doing your vaccinations in. And when we first started talking about this, we were contemplating how we might use the, the dining commons or this spot or that spot, or maybe we should be looking at the maroon gym. And, and as we, as we talked about that, we realized that there was no way that we were going to be able to do that and continue to have any kind of, you know, any kind of an educational thing going on for the kids. So we, you know, we kind of transitioned and we thought, you know, if we can get some space in the parking lot, we can accomplish this same mission. We can manage to work this around school hours so that we are the least disruptive as possible. I would like to say that we won't be disruptive at all, but I mean, I can't honestly say that. I think that we're, you know, our plan is to, our plan is to tailor our hours to, to not be there when school's in session. And Dr. Hunter recently shared some, some vacation schedules and reminded me that there is a half day every week plus weekends. I think there's a lot of opportunity to do this. And with the exception of a 33 by 33 temporary structure in the parking lot taking up some space, really minimizing the disruption to, to what's going on there. And I guess that, that's where we are at this point. We've looked at a couple of different options for where we would place it in the parking lot. I believe that you may, you, you folks maybe have seen the plans. And we presented to, and they were very, very similar. One was just set up on the Thoreau Street end, the other on the Walden Street end. And for logistical reasons, we're, we're settling on proposing the Walden Street end. And that has, that has more to do with CMLP's ability to get power to it than anything else. So that's, that's essentially what we're planning on doing. I'm happy to go through the, go through the narrative that I gave you in a little bit more detail or I'm happy to, to take any questions that you might have and also review the, the overview of the drawings.
Yeah, I think as a owner, a point I want to reinforce is because this initial clinic or dispensing site is going to be for first responders and that right now is a target audience of about 450, I think we'll learn a lot about potential disruptions and traffic flow and everything else. We want to obviously get our first responders vaccinated as quickly as possible. And it is a two-dose thing, as you know, so it will be about first, you know, two or three, either from two to three weeks to a month, where they'll be, they'll come in and then have to come in again. And so I think if we are able to either through flexible hours or traffic management, go through this and, and learn where there are points of disruption or interference, which there may not end up being any hopefully, but I think we'll learn that on a scale that's manageable. So we'll be, so, so we can then assess the site as, the site's viability for a community-wide vaccination clinic, which I think we're going to, you know, based on what we're hearing from the state, the town is, each municipality is going to end up having to do something for their own or work together within a region. So that's the vaccination responsibility we do think is going to be devolved to local governments. And so this is going to be an ongoing need, but this gives us a good way to test it out.
Okay. I think, I mean, I know Lori, Lori's spoken with both of you a bit and to a lesser extent, so of Court and I, I think that, I, I think I, everybody I believe is familiarizing themselves with the plan, understanding that the plan is, I mean, it's, you know, when it's implemented may, may be different when and if it's implemented. But I think I'd like to give everybody on the committee an opportunity to, to go through, because I think, I think everybody has different perspectives and different kinds of concerns and it's good to flush them all out right now, I think. If that's okay. Court, do you, did you have a question?
The 200 dose requirement, which I've, I've heard about in other communities, that's something we have to achieve in order to handle our own first responders, correct?
Yes.
And then after that, we reduce our partnership to that of Concord and Carlisle. But initially, to handle our own first responders, we, we widen that net and partner with others, if I'm hearing you correctly, Chief.
Yes. It's to get the vaccine. They, they won't give doses of vaccine
Correct.
to a site that doesn't, that isn't going to serve at least 200.
Exactly. So we could skip our first responders and have 200 citizens, but that'd be silly. So we get on board with 200 plus for our first responder population.
Well, and it's restricted to first responders because it's all part of the phasing, so.
Exactly, 1A, yeah.
1A.
Yeah, okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Can you tell us which other communities we're partnering with?
So we are partnering with, we're partnering with Bedford, Carlisle, Lincoln, Sudbury and Maynard.
And are they all coming to CCHS? Obviously their first responders are coming to CCHS.
Well, yes, we're gonna, for a couple of reasons. You know, we're, we're setting up this, we're setting up this structure with the, with the long-term goal of being able to handle Phase 2 and Phase 3 vaccination, which is, you know, getting into a larger group with comorbidities and then beyond that, the larger population. So this is an ideal opportunity for us to take a small group of 400 people and run them through and basically use it as a beta test to see what, you know, as, as Stephen mentioned, you know, see what problems we run into and have a real opportunity to identify those problems and correct them before we get into a larger, a larger scale event.
Thank you.
But, but just to clarify one too. So Tom, after 1A goes through, these 400 first responders from the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 communities, after that, we sort of shrink the universe to Concord and Carlisle citizens that meet the different phased requirements?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I don't, it's not our plan to have, you know, to have the regional vaccinations for all of those towns that I mentioned coming to Concord. That, that is not the plan. I spoke to one of the other Fire Chiefs today who was planning on putting up almost an identical structure on a property in their community for, you know, downstream when they start getting into larger-scale vaccinations.
Yeah, if I could just build on that answer, that's not the plan. I think we're just trying to, we know we have to get through Phase 1A and we want to do that as quickly and efficiently as possible. And, and we are just, we are uniquely situated to be able to provide this opportunity. Other communities are going to have to be, we already know they're in their own planning stages for their own operations, but we don't know what the state is going to give us for guidance and, and how things could possibly change. So I don't want to say absolutely not. This is never going to be a regional vaccination center because, you know, we just don't know what, what the future holds for this, which has been the challenge all the way along. But our intent is to service Concord and Carlisle, you know, the communities, you know, first and foremost. So I don't want to say that we have, and we aren't planning to have a regional, but I just, I don't want to sit here and say 100% no, it'll never be regional because we may get another directive of if you're not a regional center with 10,000 people, then you can't, then you have to go to Boston, you know, or something like that. I mean, we don't know what they're going to say.
Is it, is it explicit with these other partners that we don't anticipate serving the general populations of all six towns at this point in your communications with them? Not withstanding the fact that DPH can do what they do?
Yeah.
I mean, I
Sorry, go ahead, Tom.
I can just speak to that. I know, I know from conversations, they are all making plans.
Good, okay.
This is, this, this partnership that we're talking about right now is specific to first responders. Beyond that, they're all, they're all looking at their own plans for downstream.
Yeah, I think these questions are a bit of a segue toward the logistical questions we're going to have about pulling this off.
And are we, are, is, is the high school looking like the distribution place for the first responders for, for this region? Because you guys are the most far along in the, in, in sort of strategizing any of this? Or, or how did that come to be?
Well, I think we're, I think we are maybe slightly ahead. I mean, everybody's making plans. We are maybe slightly ahead. And we weren't, we weren't necessarily planning this specifically for first responders. We were, we were looking at Phase 2 and Phase 3. And then the first responder distribution with the 200 minimum requirement was, was announced last week. Public Health Directors had about four days to respond to it. So we, we were maybe a little bit further along. Honestly, we're, we're kind of encouraging that we do it because we want to test it. We want, we want to, we want to run it through there because it's going to be a larger, it's going to be a larger population down the road. So we'd like to take advantage of the opportunity.
What kind of commitment is the rental with the, with the, it's just like continues as every month? That with, with the structure?
It's, it's a lease. So it's, at this point, I think it's a six-month lease.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we have to keep it for six months. If we have COVID in our rearview mirror, we could tell them to come and get it.
So we know that we, we don't necessarily have to decide tonight because the recent legislation has extended the CARES Act money to 123121 as opposed to 123120. I'm, I'd like to look at this as we approve a pilot and come back in a month or so and see how, when do you think you would start the first responder vaccination? Best case?
As early as January 14th.
Right. So like a Phase 1 approval, because I am concerned if, if it became a regional testing center, I, I think that it would be very, it would affect the campus. And let me just say that if you were around the campus in the spring, I mean, the fall, between 3 and 6 is a very active campus. There's a lot of kids coming and going, parents picking their kids off, parents dropping their kids off. Even with COVID, parents coming to watch games. Sports can run now year-round, so it's fully utilized. How much parking do you think we're going to lose?
14 spots.
Total. How safe do you think it's going to be for kids to get in and out of their parking?
I'm sorry?
How safe? Do you think it is kids backing out of their parking spaces?
So the 14 spots are, they're isolated to a block.
No, but I'm saying the traffic flow. Your people are driving through, right?
It's in, it's in, it's in the center, it's in the center of, well, you've seen where it is. So I, I don't, I don't think, and we had, we had CPW Engineering look at it. I don't think it's going to impact, I'm not a traffic expert, but I don't believe that it's going to impact the driving or navigating the parking lot.
Do you foresee one way throughout the campus now, after 3, or no?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, yes, I mean, I would say we would probably have it enter off of Thoreau Street and exit onto Walden Street through the campus. And the other thing Cynthia is that, you know, this is going to be staffed by a number of public safety people and, and so we'll have traffic management and signage and, you know, cones and things like that. So we will make sure that everyone is clear on where they're supposed to be going and kind of monitoring all of that. The only thing I would say is in terms of a pilot, I, I would, I think we need to commit to enough time to do two doses.
For the first responders?
Correct.
Right, so probably the general public is not until March, right?
If that's, if, if we're lucky.
Probably not even then, yeah.
Yeah, if we're lucky.
I just like to, I, because I like to have a more formal memorandum of understanding of all of these things, so I think everybody's clear on both sides. The other big question I have is liability for the towns of Concord, Carlisle and the region.
I, I mean, I don't know, and liable for what?
If there's a, a bad outcome for a certain person getting vaccinated.
I, I don't think that liability accrues to the district. We're not, you're not the, the manufacturer supply of, you know, the vaccine in terms of the liability in the parking lot that's covered under our general liability policy. What's that?
What do you mean by our general liability?
The town and, the town and schools' general liability policy.
The town holds the policy for the regional building.
Oh, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so it's our liability too. It's mostly our liability. And I think this, it's a very, you know, it, it, the bottom line is I don't know that, that COVID liability has been figured out really 100%. And so we're all, you know, I've been saying this since March, we're all our own risk administrators. And so there may be some risks, some liability risk. I think it's very, I think it's very minor. But is it worth a little bit of risk to get this done? Of course it is.
And citizens will also have the opportunity to get vaccinated at other sites. Their physician's office, CVS, Walgreens. So Concord is well endowed with a couple of, with the Walgreens and the CVS and with some large medical offices. So this will not be the only option for them to get a vaccine.
No, that's correct. And again, we don't even know what the structure for the general population vaccination is going to be yet. They haven't even told us. So you may, Cynthia, you may be right. It may be just decentralized into doctors' offices and pharmacies.
Right.
Or they, or they may push communities to centralize it. We, I, I don't know, Tom, I don't know if you know, but I don't think that's been decided.
I think that post, you know, post H1N1, all communities are required to have emergency dispensing plans. And I don't suspect that DPH is going to just say, put those back on the shelf and we're going to send everybody to your PCP because they're looking, getting large blocks of the, the population through this in as short a time as possible to, you know, get to that ultimate goal of herd immunity. And if we're, if we're all waiting for our PCP to do it, it's going to be a long time before that happens. So I think that you're going to see large-scale vaccination clinics.
I have a couple, Cynthia, were you done?
No, I, I listen.
Oh, no, go ahead if you had more.
No, maybe you'll ask that question I'm going to ask.
Okay. I'll jump in then. I had a couple of questions also. I want to preface it first though and just say my initial take on all of this is that I very much want us to be able to help. I so appreciate how the town has helped us so much throughout this whole thing. And so I guess I'm stepping kind of back high level for a second here first and saying, I am incredibly grateful for all of the help that you guys have given to us. And my take on this at a high level is let's make it happen somehow. So my questions are about logistics and figuring out how to make it work and everything, but I firmly believe that we should make this work somehow. So all of that said, one of my questions kind of relates to something Cynthia was saying in terms of traffic flow afterwards, after school. And, and the timing too. I know on the documentation, it suggested 3 to 9 PM. And so yes, that doesn't conflict with school hours since school gets out at 2:40, but I'm just wondering first, you know, if the clinic opens at 3 o'clock, what time people need to be starting to come in and set up there? And is that going to be happening at the same time that we're trying to get kids off the campus? And then to Cynthia's point, there are kids on the campus throughout the afternoon at all as well. And so in terms of the rest of the afternoon, I'm wondering about that flow. If we're starting with just first responders, maybe it's not, you know, lines out to Thoreau Street, but how many people are coming every 15 minutes? And what do we expect that flow to look like? Is it, is it likely to be a long lineup somewhere? Or is it two people showing up and then, you know, another two 15 minutes later?
So I think, and I don't want to step on Tom's toes about logistics conversations, but I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on the scale. It's 450 total, not 450 at once.
Yeah.
And so you, because police and fire are working, EMS are working. And so you're going, I, I mean, you'll get a few dozen maybe. And I think, Tom, I, I think the intent was to make it by appointment. And so we can, we can really work the appointment schedule around. And so you may only have, at 3, you may only book 10. And 10 cars coming into campus is certainly manageable.
Yeah.
And then from 5 to 7, you book 40.
Yeah.
And so we, we, again, this is all, like I said, last Thursday at quarter of 7 PM, the 200 level thing came out. So we are really, you know, building the airplane on the fly, as I've said many times. So there are a lot of details. The, the bad news is a lot of details that we don't know for sure. The good news is we only have to figure it out, you know, 400 ways, which really isn't all that much in the grand scheme of things.
Right. Yeah, no, that is a, that is a relatively limited number. And I agree that this would give us a good view into how it works for, for them expanding further. Okay, so that's good to know. It sounds like it's manageable. Then also, oh, I guess back to the, the setup. Is 3 o'clock, and maybe this is a question for Lori, is 3 o'clock realistic? Do we feel like that's, that 20 minutes is enough time to get kids off campus if people are setting up here? Or is, maybe it's just two people coming to set up and I'm making up an issue that doesn't exist?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't think I've, we haven't spoken on that specifically. So we just would need to run the incoming and outgoing and make sure we had that all figured out. If we needed a few minutes, I suppose we could look at that. You know, we're going to highly choreograph this. I, I want to just assure you that I'm sure that we will.
Yeah.
Just like we have absolutely everything else.
Right, exactly.
To make sure that all this goes really smoothly and, you know, restructuring the traffic plan, I think, is a big piece of it, which they're very much on top of and already speaking about. So I, I'm confident we're going to make it work. I think we need a little more information about what the setup looks like. I think that's why this beta test with the first responders is so helpful because you've got wiggle room there to, to see it in action and understand more of the large scale.
Yeah.
Piece of it, so.
Yeah, and I guess, sorry, if I could just build on Lori's point. When we said like 3 to 9, it, it was really kind of a back-of-the-envelope-type block of time that we were looking at. And so
So it might still be adjusted.
Generally, when is, when is school clear out 3? And it's 3-ish. So if it's 3:30 or 4 o'clock or whatever, but
Somewhere in there works.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's to make sure school is out of the way before we start ramping up.
Terrific. And that's the biggest point. I really appreciate that you guys are committed to making sure that you don't disrupt the school and the students and everything because obviously we, that's, that's a priority for us.
And I did talk, I did also talk with Erin Johnkis and, you know, the winter, the first couple seasons that are happening now, there's no spectators inside. So we get a little room to figure that out. And by the time the spring sports might be outside with spectators back, we'll have even a clearer idea of how this is going to go and how we can navigate both, both pieces, pieces of it, so.
Lori, at the top of your head, can you remember when that weird middle season thing starts?
Right after the February break, somewhere in there, late February.
Because I'm thinking, the thing is, we're not really testing this in a realistic situation because the, the level of activity at the high school after school is like nothing compared to the, the spring. So that's why I'd like to maybe come back when everybody's had just more time to digest everything and just sort of do a Phase 1. And, you know, Chief Judge and Mr. Crane can tell us, you know, when they think they need to come back and get approval for what the next phase will be. You know, it could be middle of January or it could be February 1st, or I'm not sure.
I wish I knew.
I, I just think it would be good to, you know, because the students and families have had a hard time and I just don't want to make this sort of chaotic, even though we're doing a really good thing. We need to balance those two things, you know, doing something that's really important for our citizens and our first responders and, and still making the campus a welcoming place after school.
So Cynthia, we have a meeting on February 23rd. Would that be a, a time for an update and a continuation plan? In your, to your thinking?
Yeah, Tom, I don't know if we know, I don't know if we know what day the vaccines will arrive. So I, I don't know if I can commit to a specific date, Court. And then, and then like I said, I think, you know, as soon as we get through the first round of vaccinations, we can definitely come back and say, all right, we've done, we've done 400 individual vaccinations. Here's how it went. Here's what we learned. And in two, three weeks, they're going to, we're going to go back through it again and here's the adjustments we're going to make. Yeah, of course we can do that. I just can't tell you when that's going to be.
No, I understand. And similarly, the schools will have their report for you.
Right.
Yeah. And, and I, I, I hope you heard Heather loud and clear. It's, it's our intention to make this work.
Yeah.
I think it's fair to have a midterm update.
I think it's fair to have a midterm update between the first and the second doses. And then hopefully we'll have some more guidance about further, I don't know.
I got an email this afternoon, just before this meeting from the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts, that suggested that January 14th might be a distribution date. So Court, I think that if that is a distribution date, then the timeline to come back and review it is, is pretty much right on target with what you said.
Good. Okay. And that'd be helpful for everybody and the community too, because this is one more forum for the larger community to get more assurances that when this thing gets opened up significantly, we, we've done the work, you've done the work necessary to give people the confidence that we all want to give them.
When this, just a little background, when this started, when we first started having this conversation, the, the, the first responder piece of it was not even a consideration because we didn't know at that point how they were planning on doing that. We were actually planning on, police and fire and Concord were planning on going through Emerson Hospital. They were going to accommodate us as part of, you know, basically as part of their staff. And local hospitals were notified today by DPH to not provide vaccinations to police and fire in their communities because they're going to be covered under this distribution. So when we started this, this was, this was more long-term, looking down the road at phase two and phase three. I'm really viewing the phase one rollout for first responders for us as a bonus. So we can do exactly what we're talking about here, which is evaluating the plan before we really get into it.
And I think the other thing is, is, you know, the conversation started, as Tom noted, kind of like, all right, well, under our existing plan, this is the site. How would that work? What would it look like? You know, how would we plan for that based on, like I said, our existing plan? Which is what the, well, that's, and that's the, the original guidance from DPH was you all have these plans, time to, time to dust them off. And so we were in that conversation. And so then when the, when the first responder angle came up late last week, we shifted, we shifted the conversation, like I said, and I think it, it's a, it is an overall, it's a positive for the pandemic for sure, which is our top priority. But it's also a positive, I think, for what, what we can learn, you know, about vaccine, back, you know, distributing vaccines. But the other thing is that list of towns, their folks are here regularly in terms of first responders. Our first responders are in their towns regularly. I mean, I'm sure you're all familiar with mutual aid. So this type of relationship and working together is completely comfortable and normal for the, for the communities that we're partnering with.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Who's, how is it going to work? Who is doing the actual vaccination? Is it, is it sort of also rotating, public health people from, from each of the towns? Or is it, is it nurses?
So in the short term, for the, for the, for the first responder vaccination, it all depends on the timing, because they issued a waiver. DPH issued a waiver last week allowing vaccinations to be administered by EMTs down to the basic level. So for example, I'm an EMT basic, so I might be giving you your vaccine if you get lucky and come to my table.
He's bought a bunch of lollipops just for the occasion.
So, so it could be, it could be EMTs that have been trained and are under medical control for that. It could be nurses. It could be, it could be physicians. I do know that in the conversation with Sudbury today, who we're partnering with for this, that they, they offered up that, you know, because this, this is coming together pretty quick for first responders. So they offered up that they have 15 vaccinators that they can provide from their board of health. That's a large number for, for a community our size. And, you know, that was a, that was a tremendous offer that, that's available to us. So we'll have, we'll have vaccinators that are either, you know, board of health related, medical reserve corps, could be firefighters, could be paramedics. But there's definitely a, there's definitely a good, good cache of personnel for that.
And so all these towns are also going to be able to learn a little bit for their own implementation, which, okay.
Absolutely. And honestly, I foresee down the road, and I've talked to the other fire chiefs about this. I foresee down the road that, you know, we find out that on a Tuesday, that, you know, tomorrow, we're going to have some difficulty getting enough people. Well, we may call Sudbury and say, hey, could we get a few of your guys over here tomorrow? You know?
I saw a call, I, I saw a call for volunteers, vaccinators in our town in Carlisle, and people are responding. So I think there, there will be, people are coming forward. It, it, it sounds like a community effort to make sure everyone gets vaccines. And I really applaud you for doing all the hard work, get everything pulled together. The refrigeration piece and setting up the, the planning, all, all that planning happening way ahead of the, the other communities. It's, it's highly commendable that you, you have been already thinking about this, waiting for the vaccines to, to arrive. So very, very thankful. And, and you have answered most of my questions. I, I have seen, you know, in terms of testing, I have seen that testing happens right now, beginning of COVID testing, it would take 30 minutes. It was, the whole process will take so much, so much longer. Now the testing is getting, is getting done between a couple of minutes. It's, it's amazing how the processes, because we have learned so much throughout this pandemic, how they have been streamlined and how quickly things, things happen. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to knowing and learning from, from what vaccination for the first responders looks like.
So could you tell us one more time, you're going to pull services from the high school to support the, to support the facility? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Court, what kind of services?
I think they're coming off the street. I think they're coming off of Walden Street, Court. Yeah, they'll set up, they'll set up a temporary pole and string it from Walden Street directly into the parking lot, I think is what Dave said, right?
Water, water and bathroom facilities as well, correct?
So, yeah, we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna need that, Court, because for the folks that are working there, we will have the ability to shuttle them over to BD if, if, if needed.
Okay.
To use facilities. I just, I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that as, I could be wrong. We will learn that. We will learn that in the, in the trial run.
Okay, it's conceivable we could zone off part of the high school for that purpose, I imagine. But that's something that Lori and, Lori and Mike would want to look at.
I think before we did that, I mean, I, I, I understand the desire to keep this out of the building. Just, you know, for, you know, for, for many reasons. I think before we did, before we did that, I think we would maybe ask for a few more spaces and just bring in something, something on wheels.
Yeah, okay. We don't want to hamstring you, but yeah, we are going to protect the core education program, but we all know that. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, between BD Center and we also have our, our trailer bathroom. So right now, it, it's not winter, it is winterized and it's not really made to be used in the winter. So we're looking at, are there modifications to that that could be made to have that as kind of our area that now would only take up like one parking space? So, and then like I said, I think Tom's right, our intent is once we set up, we don't go into the school building for, for any reason. We're trying to plan this, so we have no reason to go into the school because we know that that's kind of a, a line that we don't want to breach.
And I'm just curious, what are communities doing to store the vaccine?
So that'll be, that'll be stored in a, in an appropriate vaccine refrigerator. And I don't know the details of where it will be located at this moment, but it will not be located on site.
So I'm curious, like, everybody's probably scrambling.
Well, so Susan Rask, Public Health Director, already has the, she has the refrigeration equipment she needs.
Awesome.
To do this. It's just a matter of where it's physically going to be. It won't be at the high school. So on, on a day that we're vaccinating, it will be delivered. And then whatever's left will be taken back at the end of the day.
I have a quick question, when I'm thinking about the concerns over traffic. Will, even for this beta test of 450 first responder recipients, will, will these vaccines be administered by appointment? So like the way, for example, I read the plan, it seemed that 15 people could be there at a time. So then there's that, however long that takes, they arrive at their, the idea in my mind is they arrive at a scheduled appointment time. You know, they go to get administered, then they're observed for 15 minutes. So you'd have 15 cars on the campus at once, observed for 15 minutes. I mean, it seems to me like maybe we'd only have 30 additional cars there in an hour. Or, or am I missing something? Like there would be more people?
We, we're planning on scheduling it. Not we're planning, we are going to schedule it. Cause we can't have the free for all of people lining up all the way back to the donuts. So we're going to schedule it. We're planning on bringing them in, in those groups. And I think maybe, maybe twice as many as you just described, because we'll, we'll have a group come in that will be vaccinated, then go back to their vehicles where they will wait for the, the 15 minutes. And we'll have observers communicating with them and making sure that they're not having any adverse reaction.
Yeah.
After they're vaccinated and they go back to their vehicle, then another group comes in to be vaccinated. So it's going to be an alternating pattern of, of cars coming in and leaving.
So when they're getting observed, you have another set. Got it. Okay, I get it.
We're thinking like, you know, and this is, this is probably ambitious, but we're thinking like every seven and a half to eight minutes, we're rotating them.
Yeah. And I think that one of, I, we may start, it's like the testing that we, that the fire department has been doing. We may start with a relatively small set of groups, but I do know, well, first of all, we don't want this to be a duration of weeks. If we can do, if we could get 100 done in a couple of hours, you know, I think we'd want to try that. And I, and I do want to say that certainly once we're, once we're operating in, in non-school hours and, and the, and the parking lot is relatively clear, I do think we're going to want to maybe push the envelope a little bit in terms of how many appointments we schedule, just to learn how many we can handle as a part of this learning process. I mean, there's, we have to, we have to test some of these things. And if we're only doing 15 an hour, we'll never learn what our capacity is. So, but again, I think that's what we're, we're going to build to. Cause we don't want to all of a sudden be like 100 in the first hour and it's chaos. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna feel that out.
Okay. But so this is quick. I mean, this, like you say, this will be a matter of days and then sort of like a three week hiatus and then they come back.
For, yes, for the first responders.
Yeah, okay.
When we get into the larger population.
Activity up there.
And we, we've been, you know, we've been doing some, we've been doing some testing. So we did, we, we did a clinic for town employees. And we did it much in the way that we're planning on doing this, but it, it's not, it's not a comparable thing because the test is literally scheduled, you pull up, you get tested, you leave. So you take out the 15 minute waiting component. So, you know, a lot of this is, is, you know, planning and like Stephen said, building the airplane on the fly.
I guess I'll just say in the obvious that, oh, go ahead, Heather.
Oh, I was just going to say, speaking of testing, the documents also mentioned testing in this tent facility at some point before or after. And so I'm just wondering what, is that a new form of testing? Or Lori, is that the testing that we're already talking about and moving out into the tents?
No, it's, it's an option from the conversations we've had. Our testing will be up in the, outside the nurse's office in the build, you know, outside the building. Right now, the schools don't have any plan to use this for testing. I don't know if the fire department does, Tom, but we don't at this point.
I mean, I think the town would, you know, if we evolved to the point where we were doing, where we were offering public testing, I think we would want, that's where we would want to do it. That's certainly something that is, the, the scheduling is, is significantly more flexible around school activity. I mean, I, I would, if we ever did that, I would endeavor to do it when there was virtually no conflict with anything going on at the school.
Well, the other, the other thing is the building had to be in place and in use by December 30th because CARES Act is paying for the lease and that's the rule. Well, it was the rule until yesterday.
Yeah.
And so we, like I said, the firefighters have done the training and it's set up, testing from, for town, from town employees, mostly for first responders. They can, you know, it's really crucial that first responders know when they have an exposure and a possible, because they, they have, they can't, they can't remote work. They have to be there in the station with each other. So we've been, we've kind of built this capacity for that kind of a situation. And so to make sure that we're using the building in accordance with the CARES Act requirements, we were going to take the testing clinic, if you will, the testing setup that the fire department has currently on Walden Street and move it over to here until we were ready to vaccinate. But now that the rules on CARES have changed, we, yesterday and today, we may revisit the testing thing as well. So again, that's how fast moving this thing is. It's, you know, we made a plan and now today it's not necessarily a requirement to do it that way.
Okay, thank you. I heard the end of that. And in case it looked like I left for a minute there, I don't know, I got kicked off the Zoom for a second.
We're all, I'm, I think we're all, a few of us are struggling. It's not just you.
Yeah, it keeps dissing you. Anyway, I wasn't ignoring you.
That's okay. I've gotten used to that.
Yeah, right.
But even though the, the December 31st deadline is no longer in place, it, since it does look like the, the vaccines will be arriving on the 14th, there is still a time is of the essence component here.
So would it be fair to say, we need to make a decision on this tonight, at least to say, yes, we can go forward with, you know, and the initial phase of this and test it out. And then we would look forward to kind of a midterm update, so to speak, between the two rounds of vaccinations.
I feel the need to remind you all the teachers are in phase two. So I would, I would think we're going to want to try to figure it out. So at least phase two, if, and probably well beyond, obviously, but I don't think we'd want to rush to say phase one didn't work and now we don't want vaccines on the high school campus when we're about to need to find ways to help teachers to get vaccinated. That might not be a great idea.
No, I think we should clarify, do we mean to check in after the first round of the first responders vaccinations? Or do we mean to check in after the full, the, the two shots of the first responders?
I'd offer up that we ought to make it date specific because we don't know any, any other timelines.
Well, I think what I heard from Stephen was that date specific is tough because we don't know exactly when a lot of this is going to happen. I think a touch base between the two rounds for first responders makes sense, not to decide whether to continue. We're gonna, we're, if we do this, we're committing to at least the two rounds of the first responders. But just as a touch base to say, okay, what's working, like you said, Chief Judge and Cynthia Gray, what's working, what isn't? What are we going to adjust for the round two of the, you know, first responders vaccine and keep going? So I think a touch base makes sense, not to pull it from the table, but just to improve the process as we go.
And I think the important thing that Cynthia brought up is that probably before embarking on the phase two, three, whatever, any further iteration, we want to have a more, a more codified plan that, that we all understand what the, what the rules are, who's where, when, that, that hopefully we'll have a little bit more guidance from all sorts of other inputs that we have. So I think what we could do is we could have a check in. Let's say that the vaccine arrives Jan, on or about January 14th. And you think it's from when you get it to, what do you think, you need 10 days to, to vaccinate the, the first responders?
Three, 400 people. I, I think more realistically, probably four days.
Four days. Okay.
We could, I mean, frankly, we could put 400 people through in, you know, on a, if we did it on a Saturday or Sunday, we could do it all at once. But we have to stagger it because we can't have our entire workforce the next day with, you know, sick from, you know.
Yeah. And you find that you want to do it on, you know, on, on Sunday, Wednesday. So I'm just saying, you, you'd want like a week from, from, right to, and then we need a little bit of time to sort of process. And so, so we should check in maybe a week after you finished the vaccinations, more or less, right?
Yeah. So I think what I would offer is let's, we, we will commit to checking in after the first round. And we'll know at least a week, you know, we'll, we'll know once we've started the first round and we'll have a plan for appointments and schedules. And we'll be able to say, we are scheduled to be doing the vaccinations through these days. So at your meeting after this date, the last day of the first round, we will come in and check in with you. We can commit to that. And as soon as we. And as soon as we know that date, we will report that. We'll, we'll give that information to Lori to, to report back to you. That's certainly reasonable. I mean, as you know, public safety has varying schedules. And so getting everybody on, available on schedule may take some doing. The reason why we need a decision now is we need to start planning. We need to start developing the, the paperwork. We need to start giving out the, communicating with our community so they can, they can develop their, their, their maps, if you will, their pathways to the site to, to make sure that there's people have it. So we don't want the site to be the thing that, that, that blocks the planning. And making a decision tonight will really help greatly aid our ability to get the word out. And, and I mean, it, it really won't start for, I mean, we'll start getting the word out, but we're going to need some time with the holidays upon us to get that stuff done.
And I, I think from what I'm hearing is that everybody is supportive of this, this beta test and supportive of, of, of moving forward. But we just want to understand what we're committing to at each juncture, right? So we want to commit, I think, tonight to this, to this beta test. But we do want to have a check-in in between the first and the second doses. So that sometime in that time period, a more formal plan for any further for, for phase two and all that can be, can be developed. And so that that will give you guys time to prepare and is that?
Not to, to parse, Sarah, but the only thing I would say is we're committing to the existing plan is, is really what we're doing. And then we're going to evaluate the existing plan at, at the, at the midpoint.
I'm committing to existing personally to phase one, and that's why I want to see how.
Right, right. But I, I don't want to call it a beta test because our, our, our actual plan calls for this location. So I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want, yeah, I don't want, yeah, I don't want to diminish the plan. The other thing is Cynthia, when you asked about liability, when Eva mentioned the volunteers, I do, we did ask the question about liability and, and that jogged my memory that I think people who are already healthcare workers have statutory protections from liability for things like this. And so that's why the push is on for healthcare professionals to be the vaccinator. So that liability component isn't an issue.
Who are employees of some entity?
Doctors, nurses, you know, I mean, anybody involved. There, there's a long list, I think, of people who can do this with, with liability protection.
I, I had one quick question. Since you will be running this vaccination, is, are you, and, and you mentioned staggering your first responders to accommodate everybody's schedule and also to accommodate not returning, not, not vaccinating everybody all at once and then having people, you know, not feeling well or basically scheduling. Is, is there a way to communicate some of those findings also? Or, or setting up this run in a way that it would teach us and, teach us and inform us about a process when our teachers would be vaccinated? If it will be run through the town.
Yeah, lessons learned is definitely going to be, we want to know that for ourselves too. I mean, I think, and, and I guess I'll just have, I'll just be blunt. We have to vaccinate our entire community. That is going to fall to the local level and that is the only way out of the pandemic as we sit here right now. So there's this thing out there on the horizon that at least I know is coming. And I think we all know, if you read the newspaper, that it's, it's going to be something that we are going to have to do. And so this is really, as we mentioned, a great opportunity to learn, you know, to walk before we run. But we're going to be running at some point in time in, in, in the near future with, with the requirement to vaccinate everybody. So your point is, is spot on. This is really why this is a great opportunity because we'll be able to, in a much better position to do that.
And I think that's why we want to check in, we want to check in soon. As soon as the, the first round of vaccines has been distributed, we want to check in even before the second dose has been given. Because we, it's better to have these conversations because when it happens, when it, when everything starts to go fast, it's going to, I think, go very fast. And so probably we'll have the most breathing room in that January through mid-February period in terms of processing the lessons.
We, we will learn a lot after the first, after the first.
Right, so, so we'll, we'll amend it. We will say, we would be committing to, to phase one with an understanding that we will take lessons learned from phase one to develop a more formal memorandum of understanding and plan for subsequent phases. Is that better, Stephen? That more like what you're looking for?
Yeah, and I think we'll, we'll, we're going to learn a little bit each time.
Yeah.
It's, it's like.
It's like the school opening. It's like the school opening, right?
I was just going to say, it's like a class. If you're, if you're studying Revolutionary War and history, you don't cover it all in one day.
Yeah, but with the school opening, we had no idea what we were getting into, you know? And we didn't know what we were looking for, what we were supposed to be paying attention to. We just, and, you know, we, we have a lot of these conversations and, and we collaborate. We all work together, we all help each other out and, and, and we all protect each other. And that's the only way that we're going to get through it. And it's, it's the state that we're in. So are we, thank goodness we're in, we're in the, the communities we're in, I think.
Yes. Are we at a point where we need a motion? Do we need to vote on this to support, you know, the phase one plan as just discussed?
Can I ask one more question before we?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if the vaccine becomes available before the 14th, say, the first week of January, and in terms of planning and readiness, can we take advantage of the school vacation to start the process if it is available?
Yeah, I don't know that we'll be, I don't know that we'll be ready. But this, this, this decision tonight will help us get a much better scent.
You will be erecting the structure over the holiday.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I don't, I, I think the answer is if it was available, that's a possibility, but I don't think it's going to be available. The, the first date that I heard a week or so ago was January 4th. That's fast approaching. And like I say, the information that I just got from the Fire Chiefs Association, and that, that was handed down from DPH is, is the 14th is probably the soonest.
Chief, and to the manager too, let me just mention a couple of things that I think I know and then you can either confirm them or correct them. One is there would be a necessity to anchor the structure into the parking lot and it would be repaired at the conclusion. And this has been done before and you've got full confidence that we're not going to regret it. And then secondly, when we move toward general population, in addition to multiple testing sites around, there will also be a Carlisle site that is not unlike ours.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just.
Reciprocity with the, you know.
If anybody recalls the fire we had in the West Concord Fire Station in 2017, we had a temporary fire station that was erected in the MBTA parking lot in West Concord. This is the exact same structure, it's just a smaller version of it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so they do put some spikes in the ground to help anchor it. But I don't know, the hole's pretty small around and then they fill it with, they backfill it with material and then asphalt to, to seal it up, so pretty common.
Yeah, pretty common, okay. So, well, I, I, I'm certainly prepared to move that the regional school district authorize the vaccination site as proposed with the expectation that a report come, come to the school committee after the, the first round of first responder vaccinations.
I'll second that.
I believe that captures what we've been discussing.
Yep.
Seconded.
Roll call vote.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
I.
Mustafi, oop, sorry.
Is that aye?
Mustafi, aye.
Randy, aye.
Wilson, aye. Thanks.
Right, it's official.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thanks very much.
For planning to protect us all.
No, well, thank you for making it easier for us to do that.
Thank you.
And best wishes for a safe holiday.
Yeah, likewise, take care, everybody.
Good night.
Do the de facto cooperation that makes it work, so.
Yes, we'll do.
Thank you.
All right. Busy year for everybody at the high school. Thank you so much again for putting this together.
Yes.
And with that, can we have a motion?
Motion, I will move to adjourn the regional school committee.
Second.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
I.
Is that aye?
Mustafi, aye.
Randy, aye.
Wilson, aye. Okay, happy new year, everybody.
Everyone, have a great break. See you next break.
Thank you. Take good care, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.